All right, everyone. Welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled March 4th City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
I would be delighted to. Councilmember Keldorf. Councilmember Giroux.
Here.
Councilmember Boils.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Baldino.
Here.
Mayor Pimentel.
Here.
Thank you very much. If you will join us, we have an invocation from Pastor Gerard from the Bridge Church. We'll be following that with a pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Keldorf.
If you would stand and pray with me, honored to be here this evening, and open the meeting with prayer, if you would bow your heads with me. Jeremiah 33:3 says, "This is what the Lord says: He who made the earth, the Lord who firmed it and established it, the Lord is his name, called me, and I will answer you, and I will tell you great and unsearchable things that you do not know." God, we thank you that you are the God of all wisdom. You know all things because you made all things. And here, your word says that you are willing to impart that wisdom to anybody who should call on you. And so this evening, we call upon you to give us wisdom and insight to know the right thing to do, the right way to do it, the right timing to do it in. We thank you for these leaders who you have chosen to lead this community. Thank you for the honor to be here in El Segundo, such a beautiful city. Pray, God, that everyone here would have humility to listen to one another, to listen, to understand, and not to just formulate responses, God, but to understand. Lord, I pray for mutual compassion and understanding, Lord, that we would work together as a community to make the very best decisions that will lead to the flourishing of the people of this community. In Jesus' beautiful name, amen.
In the name of your heart and of Jesus Christ, I pray that you apply the United States of America into the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with unity and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Gerard, and thank you, Councilmember Keldorf. Also, we have a special presentation today for Women's History Month, also by Councilmember Keldorf.
Turn my mic on here. We have a proclamation for the city of El Segundo for Women's History Month. The city of El Segundo encourages and promotes strong, diverse, and inclusive communities that recognize and celebrate efforts to bring people together for a greater good, and all women and girls, including women with disabilities, women of color, immigrant women, and gender diverse people who have experienced forms of oppression and inequity. And Women's History, whereas Women's History Month started in 1981, when Congress proclaimed Women's History Week beginning March 7, 1982, in conjunction with International Women's Day, celebrated globally on March 8 since 1911. And whereas the city of El Segundo has a rich history of many dynamic and strong leaders, community volunteers, entrepreneurs, educators, and other women who have contributed and constructed the path for the city we are today, and whereas the celebration of International Women's Day and Women's History Month honors the collective power of women, values the achievements of women who have broken the glass ceiling, recognizes obstacles that remain, and inspires us all to do the continued work to advance the rights, opportunities, and full participation of women and girls of all backgrounds. Now therefore, on this fourth day of March 2025, the mayor and members of the City Council of the city of El Segundo, California, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2025, Women's History Month, in appreciation of the many contributions and achievements by women of the El Segundo community, as well as joining and commemorating and encouraging the study, observance, and celebration of the vital role of women in American history.
Receiving this will be our Wrenken Park Director, Ally Mancini.
Good evening, Mayor Pimentel, Mayor Pro Tem Baldino, and members of the council. On behalf of all the women working here in City Hall, but beyond that, out in the community, in our school district, all of the amazing community volunteers and folks, women who are working tirelessly to advance this wonderful city of ours, it's an honor to accept this, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move to public comment. I will say, if you are here for item 10, which is the parking item, that is a public hearing, so please hold off on your public, your public comment right now, because we have public comments specifically for that item in a few moments. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone here for public comment? None for agenda item 10?
We do. Mr. Mayor, we have Susie Escobedo, who would like to speak on housing.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers and staff. I, along with the rest of my neighbors in a 23-unit apartment building in El Segundo, are here to speak about the housing issue we are experiencing. We are being evicted from our homes by the new owner, Brian Bollinger and Patricia Padilla from BD Management. This investment company, already owning about 700 units in the South Bay, is using the substantial remodel loophole to get tenants that will pay a much higher rent as soon as the remodels are over. We are already going through a really bad housing crisis, even more with the recent fires, and are being priced out of affordable homes. The apartment building we live in was officially sold on November 15, 2024, and the new owners placed to tenants a 60-day notice of termination of tenancy, no fault just cause, Wednesday 12/4/2024, on our doors, as well as sent emails on one side of the building. They placed another notice on our doors Tuesday 12/10/2024, stating that their first notice is now void until they get their required permits, and also advised they would rescind the notifications but offered money if we left before or between February 1 through the 15. They did this because the first notice was illegal, as they didn't attach the required permits or drawings. They consistently stopped by to speak to anyone they saw about taking the offer to leave. The management company also called and texted the tenants, asking if we would be taking this offer or possibly moving into their other units and apartments around the area. We felt harassed by the constant pressure of leaving. A few tenants have now moved out, which included an autistic young man that had social workers on the clock 24/7, and my direct neighbor, because she had already experienced this exact same rent eviction with the same owner 11 years ago before in this area, and didn't want to deal with them anymore. We have Doreen, who is 91 years old, back here, who has lived here for over 35 years and was constantly being visited and called to try to convince her to move out without, without having that notice to vacate. She is now terrified about what will happen, and she doesn't have anywhere to go. The same goes for all of us still there, hoping to find a way to stop this eviction. We have neighbors that have been there for over 20 years, seniors, tenants with health issues, and have already been affected by all this, and has caused a heart attack, mental breakdowns, anxiety and panic attacks, along with extreme stress. We don't want to leave. We haven't done anything wrong, have paid our rent, and want to be left alone. They have been doing this for years and will continue to do it. The tenants that took their offer had to sign paperwork that stated they left voluntarily before they got the money they were offered. None of them had the valid updated notice to vacate yet. They posted a 60-day notice of termination for the entire building on our doors on Friday, February 21, with the permit giving us until April 21 to be out, and began demolishing units around us on Friday, February 28. The current demolition noise is causing more health concerns for the tenants. The permit they provided doesn't include any drawings for each unit, or the word "substantial remodel" on it, and shows zero charges on the back of the permit. There is no proof that the work will really be done, because they didn't provide the certified contractor's information or cost of detailed work to be done according to the new substantial remodel law of April 1, 2024. We don't believe they are acting in good faith, and believe the notices to vacate may not be valid. They have a long history of evicting tenants, as they continue to buy properties in the area to make about $1,000 or more per unit. Brian Bollinger and Patricia Padilla are already being sued for causing another tenant at another apartment building to die from a heart attack, which is still in progress. We would like to know what tenant protections you have here in El Segundo. We cannot afford to come back into our units after the remodel, as they will be $1,000 or more. We are asking for help to keep us in our homes.
Thank you, Ms. Escobedo.
Thank you. Sandy Vandenberg.
Hello, esteemed mayor, honorable mayor, esteemed city councilmembers, city staff. I also live at 1620 East Maple, and we are really just wanting to bring awareness to, to what's going on. Pacific Apartments Homes has this business model, and we understand that, that people can do business as they wish, but it's just unfortunate that I know of four, this is the fourth building here in El Segundo where they've done this. They've bought the building, they've evicted all the tenants, and, and then, you know, upgraded for their, according to their standards, and doubled the rent. And, you know, there's, there's no consideration or care about the longtime tenants. I've been there 22 years. Doreen was mentioned in her 90s, been there 35 years. The previous landlord kind of looked out for her, because she has no family here. She's on her own, and she's walking distance now to stores. She's not driving, and so it's a, you know, it, it's really just unfortunate that this is, is the way they think, they think it's okay to have this kind of business, business model. The building is well-maintained. The previous owners took good care of it, and, you know, there's a reason we've lived there as long as we have. So, anyway, I think that's just, the building permits are there. They've started the demolition, and, but we just wanted to bring it to your awareness of, of this is what's going on. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Vandenberg. Any further? Counsel comments?
Unless the city manager wants to go first, we normally defer to... Actually, we'll have the city attorney speak to this matter.
The city itself has no specific rent control or tenant control measures. The state, back in, it was pre-COVID, I want to say it was 2019, I believe, passed rent control and tenant control measures that do limit the ability of landlords to evict tenants and put in place certain restrictions on rent control caps. So, the city has no jurisdiction over this issue directly. These people would, these individuals would need to consult with either their own legal counsel or legal aid to see whether or not any of these protections that were in the law, again, relatively recent law of about 2019, would be of any help to them.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, there is a statute about tenant reimbursement, but as the city attorney says, there's nothing in this city that is directly on point with this. The LA County Consumer and Business Affairs has a Housing and Tenant Protection Agency, which can afford help, but unfortunately, you're going to, you're dealing with a civil matter. That means you need your own attorney. If you think that someone is breaking the law and violating your rights, you may have protections, but you're going to have to find an attorney and prosecute that on your own. I want to thank you for coming in and telling us about this and making us aware of the issue. Thank you.
We did have, I'll look at Deputy City Manager Barbara Boss. We did have on our website for a while some of the, it was both tennis and tenant and landlord advocacy groups. Do we still have that on there, do you know?
That was related to COVID-19.
Right. Is that?
I don't think it's still on there.
Okay, all right.
I will say that our supervisory district is very, very active in tenant protections. So, I would advise also that is, Holly Mitchell is our supervisor, and her website has a number of, of advocacy pieces, or did until recently. So, that's another avenue on the county to give them access there.
One thing I just want to mention or ask, actually, I see Michael on in the back right now, is that one of the things that Ms. Escobedo mentioned, or she questioned, was the, the permits themselves. Michael, you're here. I, I shouldn't assume. Are we all on the up and up? Everything's, they were submitted, approved, everything the way it was supposed to be done, because the one thing we can directly affect is, is the permit situation followed properly? Did we do all the right things? Did the developer do the right things?
Yeah, well, I'll look into it. I don't know off the top of my head. I did quickly look in the system. There are active, there's about 15 or 20 different active permits on that complex, because there's so many units. Each unit requires a different permit. So, there, there is an active permit. We'll, we'll certainly look into it to see where they're at in the process. I'll provide my information to, to the individuals, and we do have the information on the website for various tenant protection agencies and advocacy groups, so I'll pass that along as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further counsel comments? Very well, we'll close public comment. All right, procedural motions. I will take a motion to read all ordinance and resolutions by, on the agenda by title only. Boils, so moved. Baldino seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. That's Boils on the first, Baldino on the second. Okay, consent agenda, items two through nine. Are there any counsel pulls?
I'd like to pull five briefly, Mr. Allen, and number seven.
Very well, I will take a motion to approve item 2, 3, 4, 6, 8, and 9.
So moved.
Giroux on the first.
Baldino will second.
Baldino seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
There are no opposed and no abstentions. Item five to you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Item five is our annual general plan implementation of the Housing Element Progress Report, and this takes up a majority of the pages we have in our agenda this evening. My, my question is, I understand we, we report this every year, and this is required by the state as part of their housing element, correct?
The, yeah, general plan overall, all elements of the general plan, but most importantly, the housing element.
Can you give a rough estimate of how much time your staff has invested in creating this? Because it's extremely detailed.
Yeah, I don't want to do it a disservice. Paul, you know, it, Paul Samaras, our principal planner, spends, heads, heads this process, and we're prepared to give a brief presentation if, if wanted, but there's several department staff that are involved in putting together the, the information. I would wager probably a couple hundred hours all in with, with several staff members contributing to that, to that process each year.
And I only ask that to ask the question of, does the state reimburse us for this time?
They do not.
This is a state mandate that we're forced to do, and so we have to use our own resources and staff time to do it, but they don't offer us any reimbursement for this?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Mr. Allen, for your work on this.
That's all.
Thank you.
I love a good unfunded mandate.
We get a, we get a pat on the back.
Yeah, it's, it's nothing like having frustrated people who can't get their stuff inspected or permits done, because we have to do hundreds of hours of busy work that we recertify every year. I'll take a motion to approve item five.
Baldino, so moved.
Keldorf, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Seeing none, and no abstentions. Item seven, Mayor Pro Tem, it is you again.
Item seven is a request to waive City Municipal Code Section 10-1-4C to allow alcohol at Library Park for the Gundo Comedy and Barbecue Fest, which is scheduled for June 8, 2025. And my question for the applicant is, what is the Gundo Comedy and Barbecue Fest, and why should we all go?
Hey, guys, how's it going? Well, to give you a little background, and I know you guys are familiar, but for everybody, I started the Gundo Comedy Festival quite a few years ago, ran five successful years before the pandemic, and I was sad to not bring it back right away, but comedy festivals were just kind of popping up everywhere, and, and also, I was getting busier and busier, and it was taking, it takes a lot of bandwidth to do the festival, but I really missed doing it for the community. And in the meantime, I'd also gotten really heavily involved in barbecue, and found a way to, to make a living, both doing comedy and barbecue, and said, you know what would make the most unique comedy festival in the world? Would be make it a comedy and barbecue festival. So, selfishly put both of my passions together into the Gundo Comedy and Barbecue Festival, kicked it off last year, teaming up with John McCullough, who runs the Art Walk and a lot of other events around town, and it was better than I could have hoped. Everyone thought it was really cool, made it a super unique event. We sold out almost every event. And so this year, trying to ramp it up a little bit and make it even more unique, more, you know, interesting, bring in bigger names to experience El Segundo, we would like to use Library Park on Sunday and make a really cool, different, large, you know, comedy and barbecue event there during the day.
Okay, and the date's June 8, 2025?
So, the festival will run the 5th through the 8th. The 8th is the day we will be using the park, correct?
That's all the questions I have. Any counsel discussion, comments, questions?
With that, I'll make a motion to approve the request for waiver of Section 10.1.1.4C to allow alcohol in Library Park for the Gundo and Barbecue Festival.
Baldino on the first, Giroux on the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it passes. We are on to our public hearings. This is the time and place here to fix for a public hearing. City Clerk, was a proper notice of the hearing given in a timely manner?
Yes, it was.
Has any written communication been received regarding this public hearing?
As of 3 PM today, we have received nine pieces of communication via email.
Very well, those are on file. Does anyone have any interest in hearing those read aloud? Or I think we've all seen them. Fine. Very well. The public hearing is now open, so we will get a presentation. For those ready to speak on this, we'll get a presentation. After the speaker, you have public comment. All right, who will report on this matter? Director Allen?
Yes, Director Allen will speak on this matter.
Director Allen, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. I'll go ahead and kick us off, but I'm going to hand it off to Paul Samaras, our principal planner. As titled on the slide, this is one of the, and actually, the last program that needs to be implemented, which, which Paul will cover as part of our recently, or the adopted Housing Element from 2022, and then again, 2023. And so with that, I'll go ahead and pass it off to, to Paul, who will give a little bit more in-depth walkthrough of, of why we're considering this text amendment, and what it actually results in, and then we'll be here for any questions. Paul?
Thank you, Michael. Good evening, Mayor, and fellow council members. This item, before you, is a part of our continuing efforts to implement the adopted Housing Element. And as you're aware, our Housing Element has 11 different programs, all of them aimed at either maintaining our existing housing stock or facilitating construction of new housing in the city, including affordable housing. Tonight's item focuses-
Barbie, can we close those doors back there, please? Thank you.
Tonight's item focuses on Program 9, municipal code amendments, which are intended to remove regulatory barriers, reduce costs, and to generally incentivize the construction of housing. Program 9 in particular calls for amendments in 12 different topic areas, and 11 of those amendments have been completed as of the beginning of this year. The remaining amendment, which is on your agenda tonight, focuses on- The remaining amendment, which is on your agenda tonight, focuses on multiple-family residential parking requirements. This is what Program 9 specifically states about the residential parking requirements. It states that the city will revise its parking rates to a sliding scale based on the, on unit size, just like the requirement in the Pacific Coast Commons Specific Plan Project adopted a couple of years ago. Now, the current city requirement is for two parking spaces per unit plus one guest parking space for every three units in a multifamily development. And this here is the Pacific Coast Commons Specific Plan requirement. This requirement, which is also recommended in the draft ordinance, is based on the number of bedrooms per unit. And when you compare the two requirements, the current code and the PCC parking requirement, you'll notice that the number of guest parking spaces is the same, you know, one for every three units. In addition, the requirement for larger units, those units that have two or more bedrooms, is also the same, two spaces for every unit, large unit. The only difference is the requirement for smaller units, one-bedroom or studio units. And at this point, I'd just like to say a couple of things regarding the intent of this code amendment and the intent behind including it in the housing element itself as an action item. When we worked on drafting the housing element a few years ago, HCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development, emphasized two big objectives. One was reducing regulatory barriers and reducing costs of housing construction. So changing the requirements for those smaller units helps address those particular objectives. It provides some flexibility in designing projects, and it also reduces one of the major costs of housing, which is parking. And also, having reduced parking requirements for those smaller units makes intuitive sense. You know, the smaller the number of bedrooms in a residence, the smaller the number of likely drivers, and the less parking the residents will likely need. That said, the Planning Commission considered this item two times. Last year, there was a study session, and then a few weeks ago, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on the item. Staff presented this table to the Planning Commission, which provides a comparison between the current code requirements for the R3 zone, multifamily zones, and other specific plan areas in the city and the specialized requirements in those parts of town. And it also covered a survey of other cities' requirements. And in El Segundo specifically, a sliding scale requirement is used in certain areas, the Pacific Coast Commons Specific Plan, the Downtown Specific Plan, the New Downtown Specific Plan, and the two new overlay areas that were part of our housing element rezoning last year. In neighboring cities that we surveyed, approximately 10 of cities that we surveyed, most currently have a flat rate of two units per residence, same as our current requirement. We don't know which of those neighboring cities have a similar policy in their housing elements to update the requirement to a sliding scale, but I've contacted our housing consultant, Veronica Tam, who has worked on over 100 housing elements during the same period, and she said that over half of those jurisdictions have the same type of requirement for a sliding scale parking for multifamily. So it is a growing trend statewide, and it was a key point made by HCD during the review of our housing element.
Paul, can I ask you about that? And my question is, did the original draft say that we'll consider, look at, review this? And the correction came back saying, change it to, we will adopt it? Because I know they did that for quite a bit of our first draft housing element.
Well, actually, our housing consultant, Veronica Tam and Associates, she's very experienced in dealing and working with HCD. So she had gone through those types of, let's call them negotiations with HCD in previous occasions.
Negotiation is-
So, so this program was incorporated in our, in our draft housing element when we sent it up to the state for review and comment. So we anticipated this being a requirement. So it was included as part of our initial drafts.
But just so we're clear, when you say negotiation, we say this is what we want. The state says, no, you're going to do this, otherwise, we're not going to approve your housing element, roughly.
Generally speaking, yes. There are some, let's say, absolute requirements, but there is leeway for cities to address the main objectives of the state.
And if we don't have an approved housing element, the builder's remedy would let them put a 50-story tower in the middle of our town.
That is correct.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Sure. Let's see. So this table also shows on the far right, the multifamily parking rates in the manual of the Institute of Transportation Engineers, or ITE. This is a professional engineering organization that conducts studies of traffic and parking demand, and it publishes the results of these studies periodically. And many public agencies use this ITE manual when they develop their traffic and parking policies. So at the public hearing last month, the Planning Commission, after discussing this, determined that the sliding scale, based on the number of bedrooms, is more intuitive. It is appropriate for the multifamily residential parking. The proposed ratio actually requires more parking than we require in the New Downtown Specific Plan and our overlay areas. So it's more conservative, more appropriate for the R3 zone, which is sort of our larger multifamily area. In addition, the Planning Commission determined that our typical multifamily projects in the city are three or four-unit condominiums on a single lot, and those tend to have larger units. So if you remember, the requirement for larger units would remain the same. So we don't anticipate it impacting those types of developments significantly in sort of the heart or the core of our residential neighborhood. It will facilitate housing, construction of larger developments, perhaps on the periphery of our multifamily residential areas. At the meeting, the Planning Commission also considered the regulations regarding tandem parking, so I'll just go over that briefly here for you as well. Staff presented this table to the Planning Commission, which summarizes our tandem parking requirements, those that currently apply in the city in various zones. And generally speaking, single-family, two-family zones permit their parking to be in tandem configuration, although multifamily zones today do not permit it. Mixed-use and non-residential zones allow tandem parking up to 20% of the required parking. We surveyed some of the neighboring cities, the same neighboring cities as well, just to look at their regulations, but they vary widely. There's no sort of set sort of pattern in the requirements. At the conclusion of its hearing, the Planning Commission decided to include a recommendation in the draft ordinance to allow up to 20% of required resident parking to be in tandem configuration. And the commission made this recommendation for the reasons shown here. They allow for more flexibility in design, they facilitate housing construction as a result. This is consistent with the requirements in other zones and other uses in the city. And there are restrictions built into the recommendation and in the ordinance to sort of minimize any unanticipated impacts. So those restrictions would be putting a limit on the length or depth of the tandem spaces and requiring tandem spaces to be assigned to the same unit. So there's, you know, it's easy to use. That essentially concludes our presentation, the Planning Commission, and we recommend that the council conduct a public hearing tonight, introduce the proposed ordinance, and schedule a second reading for the March 18 meeting. And with that, we will take any questions you have.
Paul, the tandem requirement, is that part of our housing element? Or was the request and promise in the housing element that we're going to go to a sliding scale on parking?
The housing element's built specifically with the ratio, the required-
Just the sliding scale? That's all we got to do to be in compliance?
Yeah.
Okay.
But when we had discussions at the study session with the Planning Commission, the full commission felt that this might be in a good time to add something more to the mix, let's say.
All right, thank you. All right, the public hearing is now open for public input.
Sorry, can I, sorry, can I ask one staff question first before?
You may ask a staff question. We cannot debate.
No debate. Just clarifying, this is for just the R3 or R3 and also the mixed-use overlay and the housing overlay in any future specific plan?
This is for the R3, multifamily residential uses outside those specific plans or overlay areas.
Thank you.
The public hearing is now open for public input. Madam Clerk, who will be first?
Cheryl Smith.
How many do we have total?
Two.
Oh.
Hello, City Council. My name is Cheryl. I live on Kansas Street, and I'm here to express my strong concern regarding the potential changes to the current multi-housing parking requirements in El Segundo. While I know that this is only for new R3 developments, I now know that this is for R3 developments, and it's for the state, so then that way, they will certify our housing element. I, I, based on the city's own analysis, it's been noted that the majority of surrounding cities maintain a standard of two parking spaces per multifamily residential unit. I urge you to carefully consider the implications of deviating from this established standard. While the specific surrounding cities referenced in the analysis are not publicly known, I believe it's critical to acknowledge El Segundo's unique characteristics. Our city possesses a relatively smaller residential footprint compared to many of our neighbors. Consequently, any increase in housing density, particularly without adequate parking, will exacerbate the existing parking challenges that we already face, and this will set a precedent. This is already something that you have looked at for PCC and have said, ooh, we could just use that. And this will be looked at at 703 North PCH, this will be looked at the Holly, Kansas Development, this will be looked at at other ones. The current parking situation in El Segundo is already strained. We are witnessing the emergence of parking permit issues in areas while multi-housing projects are being proposed. This is a clear indication that the existing parking supply is insufficient to meet the current demand. This shortage is further compounded by the significant impact of airport ride-share traffic, as well as the inherent challenges of neighborhoods where residential streets are shared with both homes and businesses. Reducing parking requirements for multi-housing developments would inevitably lead to a significant increase in on-street parking congestion. This would negatively impact residents' quality of life, create safety hazards. I cannot tell you how much I sincerely appreciate the parking permits in our area. You can actually see down the street. And potentially hinder emergency vehicle access. Furthermore, it could lead to increased competition for parking spaces between residents, visitors, and employees of local businesses. And if you guys know where Biz Houses, you know that they already have issues with parking, and they have been to many meetings to state that. I understand the desire to promote housing development in El Segundo. However, it is imperative that we do so in a manner that is sustainable and does not compromise the livability of our community. Maintaining the current multi-housing parking requirement is essential to ensuring the new developments, and that do not exacerbate the existing parking challenges, and we preserve the quality of life for all El Segundo residents. Please, please, I request that you prioritize the needs of our community and refrain from altering the current multi-housing parking requirements. I urge you to consider the long-term effect of this, the implications, the precedent that you're going to set for any future development that is coming down the line. Again, we are a unique town, and we are not like those other cities. Please, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'd like to invite Brett and Daphne Ryan.
Good evening, Mayor Pembethon, council members and staff. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. We found El Segundo more than a couple of decades ago. It's a unique town. It's really special, and it's not like the other cities around us. Call the city that was mentioned. If we all left now, could we find parking there? No. Same with if you go north or a few miles inland. It's really challenging to find parking, and El Segundo is so unique, and we just would hate to see us lose the special environment that we have here. There's not much public transportation. People live all over Los Angeles. People go different directions, and we're a car society. It's the way it is for now. People have vehicles. We live close to Grand Trope. They don't have enough parking. It's just going to be an issue. I think there's probably three areas that I see would benefit or not from reducing the number of parking spaces. The current residents would be impacted because there'd be more cars on the street that they would be competing with. We've already got parking zones, we'd need more. It's going to take your time to set those up. There's the new residents that would be moving into these large facilities that would then be parking on the streets, would impact them. They can't park in a parking facility on their property, so they're going to be on the street competing. Who does it help? The developer. That's the winner in this. So we ask you to support us and consider the residents and to consider that that would be a much more livable situation and help maintain our wonderful El Segundo. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anything further, Madam Clerk? That's all, just two?
That's it. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Baldino seconds.
Boils on the first, Mayor Protem on the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very well, the public hearing is now closed. Council discussion. Mayor Protem, lead us off.
I am going to advocate, I'm just going to tell you where I'm going on this right off the bat. I'm not completely offended by the sliding scale. I think we could tweak it a little bit, but I think tandem parking is a myth. You can drive down Smoky Hollow in the alleyways and look how tandem parking is being used there. You've got one car per space. Take a look at the Point Shopping Center, where the entire south side is tandem parking. You're only going to get one car there. Even if we try to limit it to say, look, you can have tandem at only 20%, and it has to be assigned to a specific unit, what you will get is storage and then parking for one car. So I think tandem is kind of a myth when it comes to parking. And so I'm going to advocate tonight that we go ahead and honor our commitment under the housing element and move to a sliding scale. Perhaps it's studio one space, one-bedroom two spaces, two-bedroom two spaces, and a third per unit guest? Because I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, if somebody wanted to change that requirement, couldn't they apply to the city for an AUP and say, look, my lot size is only this big, I'm supposed to have an extra guest spot, but can I get a special based on this? And then we can decide on a case-by-case basis?
That's accurate. A developer or property owner can apply to adjust the parking requirements and base it on the specific site, sort of, you know, circumstances.
Okay. So that alleviates my concern for the smaller R1 lots where it's a little funky in town and you got to make something work. And so with that, I'm open to discuss, one, the implementation of the sliding scale, but changing the one-bedroom from one and a half to two spaces, and then just not allowing tandem on multifamily, and that way, they can still come and say, this is why tandem's going to work at my project and why I should get approved for it, and we can deal with it on a case-by-case basis, as opposed to just blowing open the doors. But happy to discuss.
I'm going to respectfully disagree and play it out a little bit.
I love it.
So the R3, in my mind, is meant as a, yes, you can build multifamily and rental, but in reality, it's what, 30 units to the acre? Which, from a development standpoint, really lends itself to for-sale residential housing. And so a residential developer will come in here and tell you when they're planning something that is one acre, trying to get, they're really not even going to get to 30 units, 25 maybe? And a big key to that is going to be like a puzzle piece, a Lego piece, to try to figure out how to get a couple of tandem units in there. I agree with you. I think on larger apartment projects, inevitably, that storage, it's a pain in the butt because somebody's always coming up and down, but this is meant, in my mind at least, for ownership housing, which has a little bit of a different usage. I think if the idea is to build additional town home product in town, it will help developers be able to make that happen.
Right, but if they, if they say, look, I've got X property. Right, but if they, if they say, look, I've got X property, and under your sliding scale, I can't make it work unless I have one or two tandems, they can come and file an application, and we can have a public hearing and be like, you know what, that does make sense and it fits that neighborhood, as opposed to just letting this happen, right? I'd rather be, I don't want to say restrictive, but more cognizant of the impact that parking has in residential areas now, because we'll be talking about this again in probably five years when we're doing our housing element one more time. And the way I've seen these negotiations work is they're always asking, asking, asking. We're always giving, giving, giving. And so let's just not give it all away right now. Let's incrementally move towards that goal of higher density and more impacts, but I think we can compromise here and just kind of, just kind of implement what we said we would, a sliding scale. Not exactly like Pacific Coast Commons, because that formula is a development agreement that was very specific, and I don't think any development agreement standard gets applied across the board, but we still have avenues for builders to come in and ask for adjustments, ask for special circumstances that we can allow buildings to proceed. So I don't think we're building any roadblocks or barriers. I think we're living up to our obligations under the housing element, but also, you know, not, just not taking it too far, so.
Further comments?
Yeah, I'll agree with Councilmember Keldorff. I mean, for this project specifically on the sliding scale, the catalyst project has to be zoned anyway. That's a whole separate issue. Development is incredibly difficult. Its owner is costly, and it's incredibly lengthy. It's a reason that a two-bedroom costs on average $850,000 just to construct in the city of LA, and it takes three years on average. It's already difficult to make the projects pencil. That's why Pacific Coast Commons, although is approved, how many years ago we approved that, three years ago? It's sidelined because with interest rates going up, they can't make it pencil. And it's capital markets that will change, hopefully, but it's already difficult enough. I firmly believe car ownership will be changing. If you look at what's happening with Waymo and everything else, car ownership will change in this country, and we're talking about a policy that will hold for generations, decades. And if you don't think car ownership's going to change and autonomy's coming, I don't know what to say there, but the more we do to make development difficult, the more our hand is going to be forced by the state. That's reality. I've seen that firsthand when I was the Council of Governments Chair, testifying in Sacramento here in the dais. It's just going to happen. So we have to find a way to accommodate development reasonably. I do think, I understand your point entirely, Mayor Protem, Baldino, on the tandem, like my building, for example, we built lifts, and my tenants don't want to use the lifts. You know, that's a reality. I think it can work in housing, though. I think with R3, there tends to be much more coordinated effort there. I think this is reasonable. I think we need to do it to make these developments work again. Otherwise, we're just going to have more and more mandates coming from Sacramento. So I agree with the recommendations that they've been presented. Thank you.
Councilmember Drew? Nope. Don't get the bad cleanup in my own house. I'll point out a couple of things. One, I think if you do a big R3, which is the, you know, a giant shared rental unit thing, like you see up and down West Hollywood, you do see tandem works there because you can't store things there because someone will steal it. Which, I mean, that's just, it's a human factor in this. So I will say, if these are, you know, 30 units per acre and they are for sale, that does create the incentive for people to store things in there. So what I would ask of our planning, is there a way that we can ensure in this agreement that if you are participating in one of these R3 developments, that you are not eligible for parking permits outside the facility? Because that keeps them from using their parking structure as a storage unit and encumbering their neighbors with their parking and their guests. Can we do that?
We'd need to, one, we'd have to bend our code.
Or we could, would that just be a separate policy?
Yeah, I'd really need to look and think about whether we could, well, one, I think even if we could, Sacramento would immediately stop us from doing so the next time they do any sort of legislation, because they really don't like us monkeying with.
I don't like them monkeying with my stuff.
They seem to win, well, you know, here's the thing, they seem to win these battles. I.
They could win a long battle, but.
Yeah, well, they do it pretty quickly.
I'm parking now.
I would want to review this. I mean, I think it'd be difficult for us to do that, but I'm not saying it's impossible. It's the first time I've heard that suggestion.
Well, I mean, if the central issue here is the spillover from a large facility that has too many guests or is using their purchased unit with its tandem spot to, you know, build an extra living room, which effectively we spent however many times talking about the parks and the power lines because people were using their parking spots for living rooms, then I think that it's sensible. We can't detach those two items from the other.
No, I understand what you're saying, and I would look at, you know, I'd want to sit down with planning and look at some examples of what else has been built on that block, under what rules, and who's gotten sort of special exceptions, ADUs and things that have been built with the laws that have changed, which we can't require parking. There's obviously been a lot of moving pieces over the last particular seven, eight years, so I'm just not prepared to say you can or can't do that as I'm sitting here. I'd want a little time to think about that.
Is there a chance that there would be a large R3 development built outside of a specific development agreement with the city?
Yeah. Under which set of rules? Those today or?
My rules.
The ones that come from Sacramento next year? I mean.
I mean, if you look at the Stickenstein site.
Yeah, that's true, right?
That's going to have, that's not going to.
But that's part of our housing element, and it's got a totally different, is it mixed use or it's housing overlay?
Mixed use with ministerial approval.
Yeah.
Right, but that's not our, so that's different from what we're talking about tonight.
True. So I think what we're talking about now would be if someone builds a Death Star, you know, on top of St. Anthony's.
I mean, St. Anthony's is about the only zone site in all of El Segundo that would allow itself to be a true R3.
Yeah. So, so what I'm going is, you can imagine that scenario, and you play this out, and those are all for sale, and then we have, you know, 70 living rooms underneath St. Anthony's, and then 140 cars plus one guest or a third of a guest for every bedroom. That would be an explosion of vehicles.
I agree, and I think maybe a compromise here is I would be more comfortable adjusting the, the sliding scale upwards. I mean, really, a ownership developer isn't going to build a one-bedroom unit with one car. There's no market for that.
Sure.
So sure, a two, you know, two parking, two parking stalls for those even lower unit sizes. I mean, your guest space is really where you're going to have the most parking overflow. I don't think tandem is what affects that as much.
And it's not as though we'll have code enforcement looking at people's owned condos' parking spots, but for an R3, which would rental, which I think we've decided is financially unfeasible, that's something they would see all the time, they'd see a violation. They see a couch and a big screen in the parking garage under a building. How is our enforcement on the permit parking? I mean, I haven't heard any feedback that says it's poor. Anybody else? It seems like it's improved parking in the districts that we have it, so I will come back to beat my dead horse that if we are going to make these permits, or making the, if we're going to adjust these sliding scale parking rules, then we also need to come up with a mechanism to defend ourselves against abuse of those. Councilmember Drew?
You just teed me up.
I had you in abuse.
You had me at, you had me at permits, because I'm a little confused on some of the public comment about how these things are not being addressed. Our entire process right now is addressing those exact same issues that were brought up, having Biz House and those other areas, parking in residential units and using it all day or parking overnight. We switched all that. Like, that's been addressed or being addressed. It's not permanent part of code right now, but it's coming back to us, I think, in the next four months, if I'm not mistaken, right? So we have actually done those things, and we're studying what the effects of them now are. I think the topic of parking is going to come up every two or three months for the next 15 councils that come up here. We're a small town, and these things happen. I think if you really wanted to look into it, you really wanted to go down a rabbit hole, let's go to all these places and see who's built out to the garage and don't actually use it to park their car in it anymore. How much is that contributing to all the on-street parking? I bet it's a lot more than everybody is willing to admit. So getting back to the topic at hand, though, I think you were kind of about ready to hit a little happy medium there, because I, I was siding with, with the Mayor Protem, because I do believe that each of these development agreements, they never end up the way they start. There's always, and I mean always, a negotiation at the last minute, always. So I like the idea of holding some things back so that there's a little bit of horse trading involved. I do believe that when you go down to a studio apartment, you don't need two spaces for that. The one-bedroom, I get it, most of the time, there's two people in there, there's two cars, I get that. So if there's a happy medium in there, I kind of like the, the tandem parking thing, I don't know, I'm agnostic on it right now. It seems that you guys might know a little bit more than I do, but the sliding scale makes a lot of sense. If we can come to consensus on something that we all think is a good idea, I'm for it, but I kind of like the idea of going the one-bedroom to two spaces and/or hold back on that tandem piece, or, actually, would you keep it at one and a half? Is that what you were saying? She wanted one and a half. I wanted two for the one. Two for the one, okay, so you and I are saying the same thing then, and hold back on the tandem, and they can always negotiate it. As one thing I've noticed, development agreements happen, don't seem to be worth the paper they're printed on, so let's at least give themselves a few, you know, trump cards.
And I said I'd give them the two spaces on the one-bedroom.
There you go.
It's my compromise.
I think we might have it.
If the city attorney said it was permissible, is there any opposition for me, for us suggesting that these R3 developments are coupled with an ineligibility to, to participate in an adjacent parking zone? Because that is the crux of this issue.
Right.
And there's, when we did PCC, making sure that they were overparked for the parking study they did around there was the key element that got that over the line, along with the right turn lane they added. So I would, is there, if, if, Karnak the Magnificent, if you come up with, would there be any opposition?
Well, let me, let me suggest this. If, if the goal is to have that conversation, negotiation, to where if you want tandem, you're going to tell us that you're not going to apply for parking permits, then I think the way to accomplish that is to remove tandem and let the applicant know, if you can, if you want to apply and explain to the Planning Commission and City Council how your tandem works, then we're allowed to have that conversation without raising our head up on the whack-a-mole of the state.
I'm not attaching to tandem. I'm saying if you want to do a large R3 development, your sliding scale parking has to be onsite, and you're, and those sites, those cars have to park onsite. They're ineligible to participate in an adjacent parking zone.
If you really want to have this discussion, and then I would suggest that you continue this for at least one meeting to give us a chance to look at, because what you're talking about, as I would understand it, would be, we would have to put in our parking code some restrictions against issuing parking permits to certain types of structures and based upon certain regulations, and I really need to look at the ability to do that. These are public streets that are owned by the public. Doesn't mean we can't restrict it, and I know that, like, for instance, the city of LA, they restrict the number of permits that go per house or to, per each property for their streets, and so it is done, but we're talking about not allowing a particular property but allowing other properties. I would just want to look at this. If you want to seriously discuss that, then I would want to seriously look at the law on this and come back with some more information for you.
I think if we miss on that, we are missing the central issue at hand.
I'm, I'm open for a continuation.
So my, can you remind me, what is the difference between proposing a project and asking for a variance of Planning Commission versus a development agreement? What's the, at what point do those things cross over?
Well, a variance is generally, you're, you're coming in and arguing for something that's different than what's in our code, saying there's something unique about your property that's making it difficult to meet certain standards. We have a process, which we use in AUP, that has for like fence heights, parking, different things, where we have some flexibility based upon certain conditions, which gets used for parking. Development agreements allow for a little more horse trading and compromise about, usually, as I recall with PCC, they, whether people think it's a good deal or not, I'm not going to argue about that, but there were certain things they offered as far as amenities and off-site improvements and things that they wanted in exchange for that, certain development standards maybe reduced and those type of things. So does that answer your question?
Usually, development agreements are two-way. Like, we ask them to put in a lane and augment the traffic signal, and in exchange, they get things. They get better density, but they also have to provide 15% affordable. My only concern would be, I mean, you know better than anyone, Councilmember Keldorff, like, you've done development. Anytime you're adding complexity, you're adding time and uncertainty. So there are going to be less developers saying, we can make this project work, because now we got to spend, what, a year to get through a process, minimum, just to get through this parking consideration? It's going to take a developer six months to a year to pay for a study, to get the engineers on board, to get the City Council, the City Planning Department to approve it, to then go in front of the Planning Commission once, maybe twice, maybe it has to go to the City Council. We're just making it more and more difficult to get housing developed.
Any further council comments?
We could add a whole other caveat, which is projects over a certain size either do or do not get this sliding scale. So anything over two acres has to be presented to us as a development agreement. So that we're not discouraging, you know, an R3, somebody who's trying to build four units on a lot. And it might be overcomplicating it, but part of it is a throwback to six years ago when I was first on Planning Commission and did the R3 Subcommittee with Carol Wingate, and we studied Washington area, and at the time, if you tore down everything on either side of Washington or in that R3 zone and started from scratch, you'd get fewer units. And a port, a big reason for that was that developers couldn't build to our standards in a way that was financially feasible. So it just, with where the state is, I don't know that we want to make things harder in what's already going to be a nearly impossible environment for that.
Is there any objection to having my parking zone tie-in looked at?
I would ask to look at that and Councilmember Keldorff's idea of can we change the housing plan but exclude lots of a certain size, right? So we allow the smaller development to take something down and put up three units, but the larger unit is going to have the old standard to hopefully come have a development agreement discussion with us, where we can talk about it.
I was just comparing with Michael Allen about that, and it would be another issue that would be good to look at before.
Yeah, you're going to need some time.
Yeah.
Okay, do we need to move a continuance, or we just say it's continued pending the research on those two and a half items?
Well, I would recommend that it's be continued, because this is a public hearing that continues to date certain. We can continue to the next meeting, if for some reason we're not done by then, we'll put on the agenda that it's being continued again.
Okay, so we're going to continue this to 18 March, the day after St. Patrick's Day.
I'll second. Want to vote on that?
Do we have to vote on that, or we just pronounce continued? Do we have to move continuation?
I'd like you to be.
Nope, Baldino moves continuation.
I moved it.
Pembethel seconds. All in favor of continuing?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're continued. All right, item 11, Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Who reported this item?
Our Finance Director, Paul Chung, will present this item.
The floor is yours.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Councilmembers. Tonight, the item before you is a receiving file for our annual comprehensive financial report, or ACFOR. I have a brief presentation for the council. I also have our City Auditor, CLA, on Zoom as well. They have a short presentation after my presentation as well, an opportunity for you to ask any questions. With that said, our, our ACFOR, really, the whole ACFOR, in order to generate the ACFOR, it begins in May with our interim audit, then it leads to our field audit, that's around September, October, November, and then we work with the auditors, finalize all our audit numbers, and then we generate this document, the ACFOR. And this is really just a backwards-looking, how is our internal controls, how are our finances, and we were able to get our auditor to sign off on our numbers. Regards to just overall, I'm happy to report to the council that we were able to receive our fourth clean audit from our auditing firm, so that's a great trend to continue, and I want to continue that as well. I know historically there were times when there were some findings, but four years in a row, clean audits, I want to continue that. Also, I wanted to let the council know that our ACFOR from last fiscal year to 23, '24 received recognition from our Governing Board, GFOA, for excellence in reporting, so we got that reward as well, but we submitted it for this year's audit. reward as well, but we submitted it for this year's audit, and so that, hopefully this time next year, I'll be able to let the council know that we also got recognized. With that said, just a quick summary of the document, it's 200 or so pages thick, but I believe that whenever I look in the ACFOR, I tend to go to two really important places, which is the net position and balance sheet. So on net position, that's really on page nine and 10 of the ACFOR, that really gives you the overall financial status of our city's finances. And just to touch on a few numbers here, we ended the fiscal year at $109 million on our all funds versus $96 million prior year. On our general fund, we ended the year at $32 million versus $26 million prior year. Really, the driving force is our revenues, year over year, we had an increase of $7 million on our revenues, and that's really driven by our strong sales tax, property tax, our utility users tax, franchise tax, and also our BLT, which was the first year we received our new BLT for that particular fiscal year. Expenses wise, overall, our expenses grew modestly as anticipated through the budget, we saw a $4 million year-over-year increase on expenditures. One thing that the ACFOR does touch on is a large adjustment on our pension and OPEB, public safety, it was a calculation done by our actuarial, this is done every two years, and so that adjustment is reflected, but that's not really a cash adjustment, it's really just an accounting liability adjustment that's reported in this ACFOR. Another area that I go to is the balance sheet, that's really, you take the assets minus the liabilities and gets you kind of a fund balance, and that's on page 28 of the ACFOR. And just honing on our general fund, our fund balance, our unassigned fund balance, that's where we want to make sure that's kind of our reserve, our true cash on hand, and it's at $40.7 million at the end of the fiscal year versus prior year was $41.4 million. So we did anticipate a slight decrease, but that's of course anticipated, as we funded the plunge fund project last year, we had various large CIPs last fiscal year. Overall, it's 53% of our general fund expenditures, meaning that we keep 25% on reserve for our fiscal policy, so overall, held the financial status for overall our ACFOR. With that said, that concludes my presentation, I'll turn it over to CLA for our auditor presentation. Tiffany, are you there?
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, let me share my screen, I've got a presentation. So, good evening, mayor and members of the council, I'm Tiffany Fung, I'm a signing director with CLA, and I manage this audit, and I'll make a presentation on the results of the audit, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. So the scope of our services for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2024, was to audit the city's annual financial statements in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States, as well as government auditing standards. We performed, we also performed agreed-upon procedures on the calculation of the city's GAN appropriations limit, and we compiled the city's state controls report. We were also engaged to perform a single audit of the city's federal grant expenditures, but since the city did not have more than $750,000 of federal expenditures, a single audit was not required, and so it was not performed. So for the audit of the city's financial statements, we issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of opinion, we believe the financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the financial position and changes in financial position of the city as of June 30th, 2024. We believe the audit evidence that we obtained is sufficient and appropriate to provide a basis for our audit opinions. The auditor's report states that management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements, and our responsibility as auditors is to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements as a whole are free from material misstatements. So in accordance with government auditing standards, we have also issued a report on our consideration of the city's internal controls over financial reporting. In planning and performing our audit of the financial statements, we do consider the city's internal controls as a basis for designing our audit procedures. The purpose of the report is to describe the scope of our testing and not to provide an opinion on the effectiveness of the city's internal controls. However, if we had found any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in controls, we would report them to the council, and we did not have any internal control findings this year. We've also issued a letter to the council at the conclusion of our audit, which I will summarize, the letter states that management is responsible for the selection and use of appropriate accounting principles, which are described in note one to your financial statements, there were no new accounting principles adopted this year, and the application of existing policies were not changed. Accounting estimates are an integral part of the financial statements, and they are determined by management, the most sensitive estimates that are reported in your financial statements include information related to the city's pension and also other post-employment benefit plans, as well as the city's claims payable liability. We have reviewed and determined that these estimates are reasonable in relation to the financial statements taken as a whole. We did not encounter any significant difficulties during our audit, and we did not have any disagreements with management, there were no uncorrected misstatements, and we also did not have any audit adjustments to the financial statements. Management has made certain representations to us in a letter that was related to the audits, and also lastly, to our knowledge, management did not consult with other accountants regarding auditing and accounting matters. And so that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Question from Ms. Fung. Do you have a sense on how many years it's been since we had a finding of any sort? Two or three, I think that we?
The last time I heard was we had 10 findings, and Tiffany, I don't know if you were the auditor at that time?
Yeah, I think we've been the auditors for at least six or seven years now, so it was more than three years ago, if my memory serves me right, that there were any findings.
Look, that is a faith and transparency in government, sort of, that's exactly, you know, the key piece of the puzzle, so thank you very much, and thank you for your staff for the level of easily audited, clear statements. Do we have consensus to receive and file?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, Paul.
That's multiple consensus. Moving to item 12, the strategic plan mid-year report, deputy city manager.
Yes.
Isn't the AC broken?
Yeah. It's not broken, it's unhooked.
Oh, it's being repaired. AC's being repaired.
Being rebooted. So I'm not going to complain at all, because I like it in here.
Are you always cold too?
I am always cold.
Yeah.
Hi.
Karen's shaking her hand when she's getting ready to go. Sit inside a building.
Yep, yep. Sleepy little socks.
Look at that. Good evening, mayor and members of council, would like to present to you a mid-year report on the city's collective achievements towards implementation of the strategic plan. And I'll try to move through this fairly quickly. The purpose of this presentation really is to not only highlight all of the accomplishments, do a reminder and a refresh on what our goals and strategies are, but also, as we go into the budget planning season, to connect the strategic plan to the budget planning process and look at our goals and strategies, and what resources, people, money, is needed to implement those goals and strategies. So in summary, we have 113, five goals, 113 action items, 21% are completed to date, 71% are actively in progress. So goal one, goal one's develop and maintain quality infrastructure and technology. Let's back up for one second. The strategic plan is comprised of five main goals, so I'll go through each of the goals. Within those goals, council sets strategies related to those goals, and then from that, last year we had a strategic planning session, from that, the executive team and the departments got together and developed action items to implement each of those strategies. So goals, strategies, action items. Excuse my throat. So, goal one, infrastructure and technology, so this is related to implementation of the capital improvement program, implementation of maintenance of streets, sidewalks, public works, and also the use of technology to improve efficiency and overall operations of the city. Four strategies within that goal, and again, the strategies were set by the city council, the number of action items that came from that were 40. So far, nine are completed, and then 26 are works in progress. And if you think about CIP and infrastructure projects, work in progress means it's started, but it's not going to take one year or six months to complete, so it's ongoing. Some highlights of accomplishments, we have our, a lot of these you're familiar with, so I'll go through them quickly, the entryway sign, we have construction contracts awarded for the modernization of the library elevator, the Weisburn Aquatic Center, you know, the contracting process for public works can be a bit onerous, so we've made a lot of progress on that. Ongoing work on the plunge rehabilitation, we've begun the implementation of a new enterprise resource management system, and we have a two-factor authentication for ESPD, implemented DocuSign, a little technology improvements to streamline our processes internally, and then El Segundo Connect, we launched El Segundo Connect, first phase, there's more that El Segundo Connect can do, but we are very pleased with the results of our first phase, we have a lot of people signed up for it, and we're using it for a lot of different types of reporting, from homelessness to potholes to park improvements, things like that, so it really has a comprehensive list of items that can be reported there. And then also under technology, we've developed a project management database system, and Zen's been very instrumental in helping with that, and this workflow for the Patches team has been kind of a distinguishing characteristic of our program, that we are able to better manage, and I know you had a presentation on Patches a few, like a month or so ago, but we're better able to manage and track our, not only who we contact, but what resources are provided, also has an automated referral service, so we can send referrals to Harbor Interface, the Department of Mental Health, with just the submission of a form. Well, that's also important, we've introduced an automated system for managing and tracking contracts, so contracts can be very complicated, insurance requirements, documentation's required, we're using our project management software to automate our contract process, so that everything is located in one place, people can find, you know, you can enter in when your thing's going to, your contract's going to expire, when the insurance is going to expire, it sends notifications, things like that, that make it a lot more efficient. Some additional here, the drone as a first responder, that could also be in goal two, but another contract was approved with Flock to get started on that, couple other software implementations, streamlining services. Goal two, optimize community safety and preparedness, so this is about police, fire, and emergency management. We have four strategies within this goal, and a total of seven action items, two are completed and five are either started, or are started or in progress. Patches, we've discussed that, successful launch of Patches, Patches passed its six-month kind of pilot period, and with the presentation to council at the last meeting, we feel that this is now beyond a pilot program and a permanent program, and it's working very well. It's very challenging, but ESPD's doing a fantastic job. Recruitment, this also falls into goal four, which is about workforce development, ESPD has done a tremendous job recruiting, 17 new officers, and we're working on the additional 10 sort of over-hires that were authorized by city council. We are waiting, just now I understand it's about three more weeks or so until we get our funding, our FEMA funding, our state office of emergency management for our emergency operations center upgrade, Congressman Liu's office helped us to get that funding in 2023. We're actively recruiting for the emergency management coordinator position, and then we have library cameras.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
I'm just curious, one of the goals that we're measuring is whether or not residents feel safe, when is that next survey going out?
I'm glad you asked that. The net promoter survey went out, was it yesterday? No, it was Monday.
Does that include safety?
It was yesterday, yeah.
That includes a safety question now?
Yes.
Awesome, okay, great, thank you.
Yes, the net promoter survey went out to residents and businesses, I think we have about 200 responses already, and so we're doing really well on that, but there is the question about, do you feel safe in the community? So goal three, customer service, communication, DEI, two strategies for that one, and then 24 action items, and we've completed two, and then 20 are ongoing work in progress. One of the strategies under this is the communications program, effectively communicate with the public, so that's ongoing, it's always going to be ongoing, it'll never be done. We, one success there is we established the city brand guidelines, the clerk's office did a great job working with comms on outreach regarding the election, we're regularly updating our social media channels, we have a monthly news program, that's a broadcast program, we have a monthly e-newsletter, goes out first of every month, unless that falls on a Saturday, and we broadcast all the meetings, so we have a media team at all of the city council, planning commission, Rec Park Commission, and those are broadcast on community cable on YouTube. We do our monthly strategic plan update, we hold an interdepartmental communications committee, which elevates communications to a citywide effort, so that we're all supporting each other in what kind of needs we have with internal and external communications. Rec Park Library started a kind of interesting, innovative new program, coffee with the director, where people can come and talk with Ally Mancini about, you know, the condition of the parks or their experience with Rec Park Library, quarterly meetings with the local hoteliers and ESPD, that's retail theft-related, other crime-related issues, we also have a quarterly meeting with the hoteliers, working with the Chamber of Commerce to talk about destination and marketing. And the DEI committee presented their work to the city council. So goal four, quality workforce, teamwork, and organizational excellence, three strategies there, total of 19 action items, seven are completed, and 12 are work in progress. The strategies are about recruitment and retention of employees, providing training, reducing workers' comp, and to that end, we've done 2024 employee engagement survey with internal, it's an internal survey, we're following up on that, establishing groups, smaller groups with the city manager to address some of the things that came out of the survey. Open enrollment was successfully done, a lot of things around helping people to complete their open enrollment and understand their benefits, we had a great health fair, 25 vendors, MOU for CEA and PEMCA increases for medical contributions, trainings, there's been quite a few trainings, in-person training, OSHA required, just management skill, leadership skills, they've done a lot of work on increasing the number of training opportunities for employees, and the Walktober event, more engagement events and things like that, we hired a risk manager, the firefighter, paramedic positions have been filled, and the Rec Park Library Department has completed a strategic plan for their department. And finally, we have Trainings, there's been quite a few trainings, in-person training, OSHA required, just management skill, leadership skills. They've done a lot of work on increasing the number of training opportunities for employees. And the Walktober event, more engagement events and things like that. We hired a risk manager. The firefighter, paramedic positions have been filled. And the Rec Park Library Department has completed a strategic plan for their department. And finally, we have champion economic development and fiscal sustainability. So, there are four strategies within that goal. One of them is basically implement the economic development program, which I'm quite familiar with. New business attraction, identifying opportunities for new revenue, long-term financial planning, and land use planning and enforcement. Some fun, exciting things in economic development. We hosted thirty Ukrainian entrepreneurs who came here to learn about how they can work with countries and companies in the United States. We had an event, Accelerating Growth, Investing in Space and Defense. We had an event in Santa Monica during L.A. Tech Week. A lot of networking, getting the word out about El Segundo, introducing businesses to venture, funding, and other mentor opportunities. We did the downtown tasting tour for Aurethion. Launched a new business welcome program. So, the business welcome program is a, every time somebody registers for a new business license, they get a series of four emails telling them what they need to know about being in El Segundo. And a welcome from the mayor, as well as information about planning and building safety and permitting, information about restaurants and things to do. So, it's a range of different content, different materials. We do this ambassador campaign. This is part of our economic development marketing. You see Dean Spanos up there. We have CEOs and notable people from the business community, kind of a who's here kind of thing. And then they talk about why they love being in El Segundo and what's great about being in El Segundo. And then we take these quote cards, or we'll create videos. We use digital advertising to promote those. And in addition to the Econ Dev aspect, there's the land use part of that goal. There was a study session on the Smoky Hollow specific plan area regarding land use. We're going to be having a roundtable with CEOs and real estate brokers and developers to talk about land use in Smoky Hollow and what might change or be amended to better facilitate development there. Affordable housing initiatives, like you just saw. There was an ordinance amending the municipal code. And then the general plan land use element, approval of that contract to get started on that. And then in bringing in new revenues, we have launched the plunge capital campaign. So, next step, so y'all have the report. Comprehensive report, there's a lot of information in there. I certainly did not want to include it all in this presentation. But for next steps, my recommendation is to further integrate the strategic plan into the budget process, to think about resources and action items that would support the strategic plan and what is required from a budget perspective for that. Increase collaboration between departments to complete strategies and action items. It's just more about encouraging the departments to work together and to collaborate, so that we can share the goals of the strategic plan to accomplish them more effectively. And then at the end, I put strategic planning session, question mark. So, we are still in discussion about whether or not we want to have a strategic planning session. If we do want to do that, I would suggest just a shorter version of the several hour sessions we've had in the past, and then just looking at the strategies and seeing if there's anything that's noticeably missing from the strategies. Look at things that maybe were put on hold over the year and see if we want to keep them on hold, eliminate them, or do whatever is necessary to get those things started. There's only a few that were put on hold. And, you know, accomplish that maybe an hour and a half. And that concludes my presentation. So, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Council comments? Council member votes?
I think we have your review coming up in July, right? When do we do any review? Because one of the things that's missing, I love this, by the way, the format's awesome. I think we're really aligned on what the objectives are. I don't think we need a really robust, lengthy strategic planning session. I do think we need to look at, and this ties directly to the city manager's compensation, because we do have a bonus, discretionary bonus, that's based on how he does with the overall organization, based on performance to metrics. And last year, we established a baseline on all these metrics. Time to fill for recruiting. Are we going to see growth in employee headcount and square footage? Is a key leading indicator of economic development and our general fund revenues. So, we ought to see those numbers, employee engagement, a key one. I know that's just being finalized, I believe. How are we doing on the L M S, learning management system in terms of people being trained, hundred percent with mandated training? I'd like to see all these metrics before we evaluate how we're doing, because I think before you develop a strategic plan, you need to look at how are we done? We set out with these objectives based on how we're, you know, our overall strategic goals, but how did we do in each one of those areas? So, I think if we, my personal opinion would be if we look at that, we might conclude that we're doing really well. We just need to tweak a few things, and then council members might be like, hey, I have a new idea that has not been incorporated yet, because I'm new up here. But it could be, you know, ninety minutes as opposed to, I think, four hours. But I just want to focus on the metrics. How are we actually doing in these areas?
And we are tracking metrics. We do have all the K P I's that were agreed upon by council from last year in our system connected to these objectives, and we can report that out, yeah.
Further council comments?
I would reiterate a desire, mostly maybe it's because I'm new, but to get to see the metrics that we've been, that we've been tracking. And the city manager and I had a conversation about maybe the strategic planning session not happening, and I candidly was like, no, wait, I want to, I've never done it before. So, ninety minutes is fine, but I would just lobby that it not be taken away entirely. I watched that whole thing recorded last time, just so I could be in the room this time.
The first six hours were on the mission statement.
Oh.
I mean, Ken Burns did a documentary on our mission statement. It was unbelievable. Babe Ruth is in the first ten minutes.
I'd be happy to facilitate, because I keep things very brief.
Further comments, questions?
No, I'm good with the truncated strategic, maybe refresh?
Yeah.
And then, you know, we could probably alternate every, like, if we got in a smart rhythm, new council member strategic, and then that next year, we're just, because we have to give you guys time to actually do the work. You can't just keep coming up with great ideas left and right. You can actually implement stuff and give us the results, so I like the truncated version.
Yeah, that's kind of my point, because when you look at the graphic you put up there, you've still got sixty, sixty-plus percent of things in process.
Yes.
We should almost kind of sit there, okay, once you get to fifty, maybe we could start looking at adding, but if we keep adding onto this mountain, it's going to be tough for you to chop it down.
One hundred percent agree, yeah.
I think we're all generally aligned on a shorter off-year planning session, but I think part of that, you know, there's the metric part, which we need. We need that for administrative purposes. But also, it's worth highlighting, in however we report this, when we do the strategic company, it's, hey, what's stuck? Or what's still work in progress, but is work in progress, it's been work in progress for six years? You know, do we want to keep it, or do we not want to keep it? Because there's things that just live on the whip forever, and it is the long tail of budgeting that drives us crazy. So, before the good idea fairy sprinkles magic fairy dust on these things, it's also important to know, like, hey, what do we no longer need to do? And we honestly depend on you to rank some of those activities. Say, this sits under this goal, the strategy's valid, but is this course of action any longer appropriate to it? Because there will be things coming up, I suspect. I suspect the outcome of the fire rebuild could be some radically different state mandates on building standards, right? Or CECL, or things like that designed to allow us to give flexibility to build. Those are things that, if those pop up, immediately we'll go to the head of the line for adoption and push other things within Michael Allen's department out of the way. So, I think that updating what's long-tail sort of work-in-progress stuff and getting it off there is probably a key way to get the efficiency of, okay, well, now we have, you know, room to add two things to the plate, because we're taking off four, as opposed to four, because we're taking off two. Someone else have something, sorry?
What council member Giroux said about, we have quite a few strategies already. We're whatever percentage complete, the rest are ongoing. It's also a tool to look at, okay, we did identify something else that really needs to be done, and it does meet our objectives. Let's look at it overall, we have all of these strategies. What could maybe be pushed down the road to allow that to be implemented? Rather than, let's just load it on and load it on and load it on.
Yeah, and also finding a way to just identify things that are just ongoing activities.
Yes.
Right, continuing putting employee engagement on there. Okay, well, we do employment engagement, we no longer want to do this, we want to do one of those, so we can, you know, not muddy the water with extra data that doesn't, is not relevant. Anything for the city manager?
Yes, ma'am, if I could just add, first of all, I know Barbara flew through this, over a hundred activities. Obviously, a lot goes into this, and first I want to thank Barbara and Zen for kind of spearheading, keeping track of all of this. They go, literally go to each department. You know, this document is not a document that sits on the shelf. I mean, we really do use this as a working document to gauge, you know, how we're responding to these activities, where we are in the process. And it all goes through Barbara and Zen, and, you know, to come up with the results. So, I just wanted to reemphasize that, you know, this is a working document. We meet as an executive team periodically to go through these, where we are, what, and kind of answer some of those questions internally. So, I think, you know, the points you're bringing up, and we can certainly spend that ninety minutes very effectively in finding where the issues, the high-profile issues may be, so that we can either redirect or, you know, reconsider. So, thank you for your input, and thank you, Barbara and Zen, too.
And thank you to all the directors for making all of these things happen. And I do want to just recognize Zen, because she really is a database genius and helps so much with this and keeping everything tracked, and she's been extremely helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do I have consensus to receive and file?
Yes.
Very well, it is received. Madam Clerk, see that it's filed? All right, report's over to you, Madam Clerk.
Oh, yay. I would like to wish a very happy birthday week to Patricia Harada Out, our records tech extraordinaire. A happy anniversary to my husband. I won't tell you how many years, but Patricia's probably had fewer birthdays. And happy Mardi Gras to everybody.
Councilwoman Keldorf?
I will just quickly report that I went on Friday, I think it was, the day's blend to the legislative meet and greet. Our state senator, state assembly members, Janice Hahn, no Holly Mitchell, but all attended. And just quick recap, hot-button issues for the remainder of the year, homelessness. I thought it was interesting, there was a conversation about, quote-unquote, "traditional homelessness", and then this temporary homelessness that people from Palisades, Eaton Fire are experiencing. And to the point earlier, there definitely will be many, many, many bills that have to do with expediting the development process for that. So, everybody said that they were introducing bills to that end. Also, super topical was public safety around all of the big events that we have coming up. We have World Cup, Super Bowl, and the Olympics, and so that was very top of mind. And then lastly, modernization of our ports was something else that was a focus for the Southern California region. So, super interesting.
Councilmember True?
Piggybacking on that, I was at the South Bay COG Board of Directors meeting last week, and two major, it was a lively meeting. Two things were up. First was discussions on Measure A and the way that money is going to be allocated. So, for those of you who voted on that and thought there was going to be clear transparency and an equitable distribution of funds, you are sorely mistaken. It is a dumpster fire of epic proportion right now. Everyone is lining up to get the bulk of those funds, which I will remind everyone have absolutely no sunset clause. It's worth about, I think, one-point-two billion dollars a year. L.A. County, the way it was distributed to us, there's some decisions that have to be made over the next thirty days on how the money's going to be distributed over the next five years. And it has to do with metrics of how much you are able to increase your, you know, affecting homelessness, building affordable housing, all this. Well, the thing is, is that you only can get the money if you can reach the objectives. So, if you are already doing a pretty good job, like Redondo and ourselves, you can't hit those objectives. If you are doing a horrible job, like L.A. City, for example, you stand to collect an awful lot of money through this whole thing. So, it is really a difficult situation. It's something that we're just going to have to continue to fight through the COG. But it's an unfortunate situation. I think the last number I saw was, I believe, we currently, over the past measure, receive about two-point-two million as a COG, right? So, as eight, nine cities, I can't remember exactly how many. And now that there's an extra half a point in there, or extra point, extra half a point in there, we get two-point-four. So, somebody do the quick math on that. We don't get very much more for the South Bay cities. So, it is going to be a difficult time, and we just have to kind of stay on that. Second thing was Measure G, which had to do with how we're going to be splitting up the Board of Supervisors over the next few years. So, they're trying to form steering committees, and it's ironic that the actual supervisors are on those steering committees. But that's going to be a nice big bone of contention to discuss how that's going to be divvied up over the next few years, because obviously, the current supervisors do not like the fact that they're going to be losing a little bit of power in that. So, it's going to be fun to watch, but my first COG meeting was a lively discussion.
Did they say, are they going to split their salaries, or are they just going to add? I mean, they make three-hundred-nineteen thousand dollars a year.
Come on now.
A supervisor makes three-hundred-nineteen thousand dollars a year.
And sort of the next four that we're going to have in there.
And did they comment about on who the county CEO, that elected position? Because that's going to be-
It's also going to be one. They can vote themselves raises, too, while they're at it, so, yeah.
Did, was the COG's homeless chair there? I mean, he was the resolute cheerleader for Measure A, despite the fact that a number of people said this could be the outcome.
We're talking about, Ronson was conspicuous by his absence on this one. So, again, maybe I have somewhere to go, I'm half joking, but there was a lot of stunned faces in the room, let's put it that way. With that wonderful news, I'll hand it back over to you.
Happy Mardi Gras. Councilmember Boils?
It's a good night to be on Sydney's committees and delivering bad news for a change. I have nothing, thank you.
Mayor Portem?
My thanks and gratitude to the Cub Scouts. Karen and I joined them for their one-hundred-year celebration this last Saturday. It was nice to get to know the Scouts, but also some of the older ones who are now on to college and careers and everything else. So, it was a good event.
Thank you. I have a few items, but first, there's an item under my name, Item thirteen, which is the LAX Area Advisory Committee Appointment, and updated city council committee assignments. For a long time, former Mayor Carl Jacobson represented us at these. He is no longer able to do so, which, you know, he is, I mean, we're going to get a street named after him. I mean, there's not much else he can do, more else he can do. But former council member Pierstik has volunteered to fill in in his stead. And so, I would like to move approval for that and also approve the revisions to our committee assignments.
Can I point out that under Aquatics, you still have Keldorf and Giroux? And that was the one committee I wanted to stay on, we did some previous, just what's on the, I think what's on the agenda doesn't reflect what we discussed last time.
I will amend that, and I frankly don't recall who we were switching out. Giroux. Giroux, you were out, you were comfortable?
Yes, actually, there was a, it was just me, and then it became Ryan. So, I think there's actually only one delegate, there's only one, and then there's a delegate, there's like a backup.
Yeah, like an alternate.
It's one and an alternate. So, should be Keldorf and Baldino.
Okay. Any objection to that amendment?
None.
All right, I will move approval to the substitution of Pierstik for Jacobson and the Aquatics alteration. Second, second from Baldino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fantastic. I bring my Excel glasses. A few items of note, Personnel Committee for L.A. County Sanitation. There was a two hours of horse trading over some very minute issues with employee compensation. But the most important thing is, little did I know that L.A. County owns a gigantic super landfill site in Imperial County, forty miles southeast of the Salton Sea. It has never been used. As of two thousand and four, L.A. sanitation was receiving about forty to forty-five percent of all the solid waste disposed in L.A. County. They were doing all the tipping at the landfill at Quente Hills. They anticipated this continued to grow. So, being a really forward-thinking, infrastructure-focused organization, they built a train depot and a train to run all the way to Imperial County to take covered garbage out there. As it turns out, the industry rapidly diversified, it privatized. People like Edco Waste Management own their own landfills, so we receive fewer garbage. So we receive fewer garbage on the LA County sanitation side now than we did in two thousand and four. So they've never used this site, which costs about as much as a small athletic stadium. So we took the action, and we didn't want to rush into anything because it's been available for fourteen years unused. It just has some trucks parked on it. We're now hiring a Realtor to pursue a potential lease. There were a lot of good ideas, as you can only imagine when you get twenty elected people in a room, of what if we did this, what if we did that? And I, I fell asleep halfway through that part. But when I woke up, someone was asking like, well, can we, you know, who's a neighbor that we can rent it to? And there was a really helpful tidbit that the next door neighbor is a gold mine. If anyone here knows anything about industrial gold mining, it involves an enormous amount of cyanide. So my immediate response was, let's sell this thing. So hopefully, we sell this thing at the bargain price of a hundred and forty million dollars. Likely will be leased, but it is an enormous site. So if anyone has any large-scale things they want to go do out there that don't involve touching the water, you know, there's a big site. But this was, I mean, it's a hu, I mean, it is a, it is an unbelievably large facility. This would be, it's ten times the size of a normal municipal landfill. It is absolutely enormous. It's got two train lines running to it that are mint condition. So there's more good governance. Went down, met with the CEO of Andoril in Costa Mesa, asked him why they based themselves down there instead of El Segundo, despite the fact that a lot of their vendor network is El Segundo. And it turns out, he's from there. So I couldn't, I was sitting there getting ready to give him the whole spiel, and he's like, no, I'm from here, I want to live near my parents. But enormously well-represented, there were very senior people at JP Morgan, including your former classmates there, Venable, the land, for, land, excuse me, Venable, the law firm, that did all the negotiation for SpaceX's land use for launches in Texas, all of which, all they wanted to do was talk about El Segundo, which was great. So, and that's a reflection, obviously, of the deputy city manager's job in economic development, some of the effort we've put down there. There is a, you will all be seeing a letter that will be circulated to see if we want to endorse asking Congress to designate us a defense hub. And in that same vein, there's a few companies, notably, some of our helicopter companies that have asked about use of some of the heliports. So we'll be connecting some of the vacant properties, Kilroy's underused properties, which have, they've got, I think, five helipads alone, and connecting with them to see if they can get some temporary use out of that. We met with the building operators and managers to talk about a permitting. Nicely done, Michael Allen. Already had, they showed up asking for things that we were already doing. That's always important. And other than that, just some initiatives to try and work with the city council district to our north. We still have not made significant headway in linking up with, with Tracy Park's team about a few pieces. And I'm going to put one thing on your plate for Public Works. If we can talk through what we're doing with Hyperion at the next meeting about some of the, they, again, appears to be enormous sanitation overcharge based on, on their improper calculations after the ninety-one percent increase they jammed us with a few years ago. It looks like there'll be more money rebated in. I know it's a soft, soft subject, but that is a, a significant amount of money and I think worth putting on the public record at our next meeting. City Attorney, I apologize for calling you Karnak the Magnificent.
Nothing's needed further, thank you.
City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Just a quick update on Hyperion, speaking of Hyperion. Still receiving, they are still receiving odor complaints. In the last two weeks, they received approximately sixty odor complaints. They were issued three notices of violation during, on February twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and March second for public nuisances. So still coming in, and we are drafting a letter for the next public hearing. And we will reflect all of this in that letter to continue that abatement order. Actually, the facility did perform, I'm being told that the facility did perform well during the recent rainstorm from February twelfth through the fourteenth. They did well, receiving peak flows of five hundred and seventy million gallons per day. So that's a good sign. In addition, we were notified that Meredith McCarthy of Heal the Bay will serve as the Hyperion Water Reclamation Plan Independent Liaison for, for next year. And that role will be to help improve transparency and communication among the residents, Hyperion operators, and the local stakeholders. In fact, they've developed a brief online survey that, for people who live and work in our city. And the purpose of the survey is to understand awareness and impressions of quality life issues. The survey is live and was sent out by Hyperion on March third. And we will also have the survey linked on our website.
I, I think that that's a little bit of good news, but before the, the Heal the Bay portion, that they could tolerate that much water in a day. But that's a hundred and thirty percent of their max capacity.
Absolutely.
And that's all water that's not designed to go into that system. That's water intrusion through manholes and things that, that's not, that, that is a, a, a reflection of, I know we sit here and throw, throw things at them, deservedly so, but that is a marked improvement in their performance to tolerate that level of flow.
Yeah, the average flow is two hundred and sixty.
Yeah, it was designed at four forty, right? So two sixty's what they get now, but when they built it was for four forty. So if they're taking, you know, five, five hundred something, but that's a really impressive ability to not have that rocketing out.
That's it, that's all I have, thank you.
Yes. Councilman Drew?
How far behind are they on the hiring of the plant manager? It's been, we've been talking about this for...
Yeah, it's, we're, we're running into almost a year now.
One of the things I learned from somebody that is closely associated with Hyperion is that the pay structure for that role is way inferior to positions like DWP, for example.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Comparable skillset engineer, twenty, thirty years experience, but they'll pay a hundred thousand dollars less. So let's address that with the City of LA.
I will.
I mean, this, this has been going on for how long? Didn't they come up empty-handed?
Yes.
First round?
They did. It's, it's, they're circling back to renotice the position, but if the salary is such that it's going to be difficult.
If it doesn't have an office, they could use Measure A. Anything for other city manager?
No, nothing else, thank you.
All right, we are adjourned.